I apologize for the little late start. We'll get started with the Board of County Commissioners meeting for January tenth, two thousand and twenty-three. We'd like to start with Daniel Helms coming forward for the invocation and then the pledge of allegiance by Commissioner Wilkinson. Please rise if you can.
Father, I am just grateful for you and that you love me and there are a lot of reasons why you should. You're a God that's filled with grace and mercy and truth and I'm also grateful that I get to live in this county, that I get to pastor a church here, grow my family. So, God, we need your help in this. So, I pray for your blessing in this time. I pray that you might use the leaders in front of me to create a community here that is just ripe and ready for you to flourish us and to grow us and to have us where you desire for us to be. So, God, I just pray for your blessing and I pray for your goodness throughout this meeting and this gathering and it's in your name I pray. Amen.
Pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Mr. Helms, and thank you, Commissioner Wilkinson. The chair will entertain a motion for the approval of the minutes as listed on the agenda.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
A second.
We have a motion and a second. Is there any further additions or corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. We're going to vary just a little bit from the agenda this morning before we go into the Port Authority and I'm going to ask Mr. Suggs if he would make some comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and good morning, Commissioners. Just want to take an opportunity this morning to recognize one of our very own, our Commissioners, as well as Vice Chair Commissioner Harvey this morning. It's been brought to my attention that Commissioner Harvey is now the Executive Director of the Florida Association of Counties Trust. And that's for those of you who don't know what that might be, that is our insurance group that we're partners with. Fact is a central part of liability coverage and effective risk management for its partners in the community and throughout the state of Florida and our counties. And I want to just briefly just give a quick quote if I could. I want to read Executive Director Ginger Delagall's quote on Chairman Harvey or Vice Chair Harvey this morning. And Ms. Delagall's quote is, you know, Commissioner Harvey has always been an effective advocate for Florida's counties and through his leadership on facts broadband and business solution committees and amongst other committees, Commissioner Harvey ensures that Florida rural counties have always had a seat at the table. And I can't think of a better quote in representation of the work that Commissioner Harvey does, not only for our county but for counties throughout the state and the work that he does up in Tallahassee. So, it's my honor this morning, and thank you, Mr. Chairman, for allowing me to do this, is to offer Commissioner Harvey our gratitude and appreciation for all the work you do on behalf of the counties and the state as well as for your administration here. And please, everyone, welcome in and congratulate Commissioner Harvey on his new position of Florida Associate Counties Trust. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Harvey, for what you do for us. I've had a request also to put on the agenda an announcement and I think Mr. Nat Gill is with us this morning. Nat, would you please come up and make a brief announcement on?
Thank you. Appreciate it. My name's Daniel Gill, a union president for the Department of twenty-nine, out here fighting firefighters. And I had some things come about in the last month that transpired that kind of touched a lot of our hearts. Christmas Eve, a young man, five-year-old boy, Nathan Scott, was burned, seventy-five percent of his body, an accident, pretty dramatic injuries, in the west end of the county, taken to Shands, finished Shands this whole time, and they just arranged a transfer to Shriner Burn Center in Galveston, Texas. And all of that, just to say that in this job, you have things that kind of break your heart, you have calls to stick with you, calls to kind of stay on your crawl a little bit, and this is one of them that's just really affected a lot of our people. And in doing that, we've all kind of banded together and said, you know, what can we do? As a union, as a people, as someone with a platform, we've got the opportunity to affect some change for this family. The mother was a nurse for about a year, and I guess she just recently lost her job because a lot of the time she's had to spend with her son in hospital. There's been a lot of things that are just steadily stacking against the poor family. And so, as a union, we've decided to step up and do a series of fundraisers to really support them, come alongside them, do what we can do, and we can make it appealing faster and hopefully we can put some money in their pockets and pay bills and pay for travel and expenses and counseling and whatever we can do. We've tried to arrange every single thing that we can for them. So, quick announcements this weekend, we're doing a boot drive. You'll see fire trucks and rescues on several street corners throughout the county, two oh seven seventeen, a designated spot here in the city, we're not a hundred percent on that one yet, and then one out in the west end at three fifteen and twenty. And it's just in an effort that we're going to be putting boot out there in the public to drop money in to help support this family. We're going to be utilizing funds for this, a hundred percent of the proceeds are going to be going to them. We might use some of the funds to actually purchase some large raffle items for another large cookout that we're doing February seventeenth here at the complex, the local grass lawn out in front of the Board of County Commissioners. We'll be doing a large cookout. My plan is to have several large raffle items, we'll be reaching out through surrounding counties, locals, local businesses. Shands Care, I guess, is going to land a helicopter here just to kind of bring in some attraction to it and we're going to try to put as much as we can for this family. It's just a way for us to take care of our own, the position we are. If you have the opportunity to do something, you don't do it, shame on you. So, we're going to do what we can to help this family and we just encourage everybody to come out February seventeenth, the main cookout here, and then you'll see some fire trucks and rescues on street corners this month of the weekend. So, I appreciate the time and I will slip it in the agenda.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Gill contacted me about doing some cooking out there, so we'll be doing the cooking. We're going to have twenty-five hundred wings, chicken wings, it'll be Chicken Wing Friday, basically that day. So, I believe one of our local stores in the west end is going to donate that chicken, they're working on that now. So, we're going to have a big time out there, so save your appetite for Chicken Wing Friday that day and some other things will be going along with that. But we're going to be looking for some help from the board if you want to come out and help cook. I know Commissioner Pickens says whenever he helps me cook, he just stands around and watches everything get done, basically.
All you got to do is show up.
But we can use all the help we can get, it'll be a fun day and it'll be good chicken wings that we'll be cooking on the grill out there, so thank you.
Again, that's February seventeenth.
February seventeenth, yes, sir, it's going to be kind of an holiday event. We'll be here set up cooking and then the plan is to do like a raffle drawing, we're going to work it out logistically with our department to do a raffle drawing that evening for a series of large raffles. But if I could just kind of tag along with what you're saying about Commissioner Harvey, I'm not here to kiss anybody's butt, but it was one phone call to Commissioner Harvey to ask if he'd be willing to help cook, help do this, because I know that's what he does and he's a real community member. So, for us, as a local and as a union, as a department, we greatly appreciate the support that we get, our lowest member in our department all the way up to the top. So, we need to see that this county and this administration, this commission, it looks out for our own, and I really appreciate that.
You know, at the end of the day, we're all family and we all have a talent to give and if my talent's cooking, I'll be glad to give that talent, so thank you.
Thank you, Nat, for coming and doing that for us today and again, thank you, Commissioner Harvey. At this time, we're going to recess the county commission meeting and we're going to convene the Port Authority meeting and the chair will entertain a motion for approval of the minutes.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
We have a motion and a second for approval of the minutes. Any additional corrections? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. At this time, we're going to open public comment for Port Authority items. Is there anybody here today that would like to have any comments on Port Authority items? Seeing none, we'll close public comment. We'll move to item C, which is the letter of funds availability. I'm going to turn that over to Ms. Young, I'm assuming. Or Mr. Suggs.
Yes, sir, this is, we recently received an appropriation or a grant and this letter of a funds availability is simply the initial letter before we get the grant agreement. It is a non-binding letter, it simply states that we have the fiscal capacity to commit, if we so choose to, one hundred and fifty-one, five, to the grant project, that is the grant award, I'm sorry.
Okay, thank you. Is there any further comments on this at this time?
Mr. Chairman, I move approval.
We have a motion and a second for approval. Any additional discussion? Hearing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously. Is there any general discussion or Commissioner comments on Port Authority items? Okay, we'll, Port Authority items, yes, sir. What is it? Port Authority is basically properties and the port out behind Crystal Cove in that area and it's just, the Port Authority is a different entity that the commission runs. If you're going to speak, I don't mind, but you're going to have to come up to the podium.
It does not pertain to Bass Drive. That will be the second public hearing at nine thirty.
Okay, thank you for that, Commissioner Pickens. If there's no general, further discussion, we will adjourn the Port Authority and we'll reconvene the county commission meeting and we'll move on to presentations and would Ms. Cotter please come forward? Is she here this morning? There she is, hey, Mary Ann. And Commissioner Pickens has agreed to read this for us this morning.
Putnam County Proclamation number two thousand and twenty-three dash zero zero one, National Human Trafficking Awareness Month. Whereas nearly a century and a half ago, President Abraham Lincoln issued the Emancipation Proclamation, a document to reaffirm the noble goals of equality and freedom for all that lie at the heart and with wings to live in America. In the years since, we have tirelessly pursued the realization and protection of these essential principles and whereas despite our successes, thousands of living in the United States and still more abroad suffer in silence and the intolerable yoke of modern slavery. During National Slavery and Human Trafficking Awareness Month, we stand with all those who are held and compelled to service, we recognize the people, organizations, and government entities that are working to combat human trafficking. We recommit to bringing an end to the inexcusable human rights abuse and whereas human trafficking is a thirty-two billion dollar per year global criminal enterprise and is a crime as well as a civil human rights violation. An estimated twenty-five million people are currently victims of human trafficking for both sex and labor. And whereas human trafficking endangers the lives of millions of people around the world and it is a crime that knows no borders, human trafficking is a form of modern-day slavery, be it for commercialized sexual or labor exploration. This otherwise multi-layered crime does not have a static profile. It affects children, adults, U.S. citizens, residents, and foreign nationals alike. And whereas this month, we do not simply reflect on the appalling reality, we also pledge to do all in our power to end the horrific practice of human trafficking that plays victims around the world and in our neighborhoods, and now for, be it proclaimed by the Board of County Commissioners, Putnam County, Florida, that January two thousand and twenty-three is designated as National Human Trafficking Awareness Month in Putnam County and to urge all citizens to educate themselves about all forms of modern slavery and the signs of consequences of human trafficking. Done, ordered, adopted, this ten-day of January two thousand and twenty-three. Mr. Chairman, I recommend adopting this proclamation.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries unanimously.
I would just like to thank you again for, you know, again this year for designating November Human Trafficking Month. I would like to remind everybody, everybody, that November eleventh, which is tomorrow, is National Wear Blue Month and that's to join with the rest of the country in trying to prevent human trafficking and trying to make everyone aware. So, to help all our kids, everybody wear blue tomorrow, okay? Do you have any, you're like, this is me.
Just to introduce ourselves, Jonathan Peters, Putnam County Sheriff's Office, the area Harman, we're going to investigate the same ground, the sheriff's office, the, this part, certainly this part, we're trying to be aware.
Okay, next, we're going to move item B on the presentations and I'm going to ask Ms. Young if she will come forward and Ms. Canaan was not able to be here this morning.
Thank you, Chairman. And I'm going to ask Mr. Grimes and Mr. Fred and our fire rescue staff that's here today with us. It is my honor to present to you the Putnam County Employee of the Month for the month of October, Mr. Fred Linear. I will tell you that on the nomination form, we have several different categories for which employees can be nominated and the overall theme for Mr. Linear was that he goes above and beyond. When asked how he performs his duties, he goes above and beyond to whomever, wherever, and whenever to get the task done. When asked his willingness to help and train others, he was described as he teaches and trains at all times, he's willing to volunteer his time to teach future and current service people above and beyond. When asked to show the nominee's creativity in his job performance, Fred goes out of his ways to fix service and to help fire equipment to save money, he is a jack of all trades. In each and every category, it was very obvious that Mr. Linear goes above and beyond for our Putnam County Fire Rescue Service and we are pleased to award him with October's Employee of the Month.
Well, I refer to Fred as chief because he retired from the Navy Fire Department in Jacksonville many years ago. He came to work for us, I think, twelve, thirteen years ago. I'd have to say, I don't know what time Fred comes to work, but every time I come to work, Fred's there. So, I'm not sure what time he opens the gate, it must be six-thirty in the morning when he gets there, but he always is working hard. I mean, sometimes I think he gets his ten thousand steps in by nine AM. I always ask him, you know, where he's been, but you don't want to follow behind him because he's busy all day, every day. He's one of a kind, he's one of our younger guys, he just didn't age well, obviously. Fred's really good, I mean, we enjoy having him, how many more years we have him, but while we have him, he's sure a benefit to our county and our citizens. Fred does an outstanding job day in and day out, but Ms. Julianne described it well, he goes above and beyond, he teaches a lot of the young folks, you know, his years of experience. He works on fire trucks, there's, I'm not sure that there's any- Um, he works on fire trucks, there, there's, I, I'm not sure that there's anything out there that Fred can't do. Um, along with at Home Depot and Lowe's doesn't have it, Fred does. So, you know, if you're ever looking for something, Fred's always got something hidden somewhere that always becomes useful, so... But no, Fred, Fred is a great asset to our department, thank you.
Yeah, I'll bring everybody up, let's get a picture.
Okay. Um, and our next employee of the month for October is Mr. Brad Jones. Um, when asked in the several categories as we've kind of reviewed, Brad goes above and beyond for his brothers and sisters. He repeatedly has picked up ninety-six hour shifts to assist with coworkers, going home sick over pending cancellations of annual leave. He also offers to work on rescues to allow a break on someone else. Um, again, the overall theme on Mr. Jones's nomination form that was that he is always willing to take on an extra shift or an extra duty or extra work to help another coworker that he works with. But not only that, um, Brad is the, Brad is the type of employee that we could all learn from. He offers to cut patients' grass when they aren't unable to finish blowing off their deck, and even takes trash out. So he's going above and beyond for not only our employees here, but also our citizens. It's also my honor to present Mr. Brad with the October, November Employee of the Month.
Kinda have to go to the same sentiments on Brad, I'm just not sure when he goes home, um, because he's always here, but, you know, the, when we read through the, um, letter that was written, it's not written by us, it's written by somebody else in the field that works with these people. And that thing, that's what's kind of brings it all home, because he is a shining example of what we're looking for. You know, when it said, you know, elderly person needed their grass cut, the day that he does take off, he goes and cuts an elderly person's grass, he gets there on the call and the, and the cans overflow and he pulls it out to the curb. You know, that's what we're all here for, to serve our citizens, and I think truly that Brad is one of those people that just absolutely serves the citizen to the best of his ability, but, uh, the letter Ms. Julianne wrote was absolutely perfect, and he's just a shining example of what we have for employees in our county, thank you.
Would the rest of fire rescue please join us?
So, Fred's not much showing.
Congratulations, sir.
All right.
All right, congratulations.
Congratulations, good job.
Thank you, everybody, again, uh, we're going to move into the, uh, public hearing for, uh, three different cases. The first one is the adoption of a resolution to vacate an unnamed thirty-foot road easement at seven-oh-nine Barden Road. Uh, this was worked shop and, and agreed to bring to the public hearing, so, um, I guess, is there any comments by the commission before I ask for, um, comment from the public on this one? Seeing none, is there anybody in the attendance that would like to speak for or against this particular, um, adoption of a r- this resolution? Seeing none, the chair will in, uh, will close public comment and ask for a motion?
Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution Number twenty-two-three-zero-zero-two.
We have a motion and a second, is there any further discussion?
Zero-zero-three?
Twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-three, what did you say?
Two?
Okay.
I got the one.
So this is three.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move that we adopt Resolution Number twenty-two-three-dash-zero-zero-three.
Okay, we have a motion and a second for the correct resolution. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, ayes have it, motion carries. Okay, we'll go to the, uh, to item B on the agenda with... Okay. All right, we ran the meeting a little faster than what Public Works thought we would, three minutes faster. We have a ti- yeah, we have a time certain for nine-thirty on this agenda item, so we're gonna take a three-minute recess. Nine-thirty certain public hearing, um, and we're going to move into the discussion of the resolution to vacate a portion of Bass Drive. And I think, is there any commissioner comments before I open public comment?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, I'll make a few comments, I'm Bill Pickens, uh, county commissioner, District One, and Bass Drive is in my district. Um, this actually request came to the Board of County Commissioners in a workshop some two years ago, and, uh, it moved through the process, um, there was a process to allow a citizen to, um, request, uh, a vacation of a piece of property or a road, and that was the process that took place. This process came to a public hearing, and it was during the COVID area, era, and I know we're all on Zoom meetings, okay? And, um, somehow, I guess, it got out that this was a slam dunk, maybe. And, uh, nobody contacted me about this, not one person. So this came to a vote, and there were some comments from Zoom about opposing this, which I was surprised. So we did not take that to a vote, we tabled it. A month or so later, the applicant pulled the application. So about six months ago, I think, the applicant applied for it again. At this particular time, I had talked to some citizens, most of them on the phone, some in person, as like Mr. George Anchetta, about this. It came to a public, I think, a workshop again, and then it came to a public hearing. We pulled this because the county was not a hundred percent sure, and correct me, Rich, if I'm wrong, that we owned Bass Drive. After a lengthy title search, the county had been designated or given Bass Drive. So after that title search, the applicant applied for this again, and we took this to a workshop one more time, correct, commissioners? So here we are today, the commission is heard mostly, unless you've contacted each of the commissioners personally, the views of the applicant, our Public Works Department, and now we're gonna hear from the citizens. If you go back to the last meeting, I pulled this from the agenda, the consent agenda to prove it to go to this point, to make sure that what we were doing that particular day had no bearing on Bass Drive, and that it was coming to this point where the citizens would have input on whether we're gonna vacate this road or not. So I just wanna make that clear, and not many of you have contacted me. I heard this morning that somebody contacted about making a park about it, okay? You know, I'm pretty accessible, okay? I don't think I have ignored anybody. And I see you shaking your head, but you probably oughta come, shoulda come to me, because I'm the chairman of the Parks and Recreation Committee.
Sir, sir.
Okay?
I will give you your opportunity to speak, but not debate the commissioner.
Okay, so, I just wanted to get some things, because I've been dealing with this for two years. All I want to do, and all these commissioners up here want to do, to be honest with you here, Commissioner Adams Act down there was not on this board when this first came to us. Ms. Wilkinson is at the very tail end of this. So she's just gotten the consent agenda order and what we have today. Okay, so this is how long this has been going on, to make a decision, the right decision, okay? And that's all this commission wants to do, that's all I want to do. And I understood when I walked in here today, that I'm gonna make some people happy, and I'm gonna make some people mad. But, when I signed up to run for county commissioner, I understood this, it's not the first tough test that I've had. We'll make a decision about it, and I hope everybody can agree, and we will walk out of here, still remember that we're all in this together, we live in Putnam County. That's all I have right now, Commissioner.
Thank you, Commissioner Pickens, uh, Commissioner Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, I do have a question for our Public Works Department, could I ask, um, Mr. Nemitz, if you could?
Sure.
Mr. Nemitz, could you? And, and, and I appreciate Commissioner Pickens' comments, because we have been dealing with this quite a long time. Um, in reading the resolution last couple days, we're just, the proposal is to vacate a portion of what the county owns on the road only, not anything else, correct?
That's correct, the portion of the road being, uh, vacated, uh, it's at the end of the, uh, circle there. The quester owns the property on all three sides of the section, uh, being vacated.
Will anybody be unable to, to reach their residence with the vacation of, of our portion of the road?
They will not, no, no property owners would be adversely, uh, affected by this vacation.
That's the only questions I have, thank you, Mr. Chairman, thank you, Mr. Nemitz.
Is there any further questions before we get started with our public hearing and, uh, public comment? Okay, the first, uh, first person I'm gonna call is Kenneth Janru. I didn't know who that was, is that you, Mr. Janru? That's fine with me, sir, you're all right, he's all right, I'll, I'll put you, you on all the way to the back or just a few back? One or two back, okay, that's fine. Well, I'm sorry, Patrick, I guess I shoulda let you speak first, but go ahead. I'm good with that, Patrick. Well, I'll give you an opportunity, but if you wanna go first, that's fine, all right with me, does he need to go first? I thought I'd let you, I thought I'd let you listen to all the comments and then come forward and give you the cleanup, but, uh, but if you wanna go first, I'll absolutely let you. Okay? No, I had forgot about you, Patrick, okay? You're the applicant's attorney, okay, so, who would you like to go first, Mr. Anchetta? Please come forward, sir.
I wanna thank the commission for allowing me to speak to you and address you regarding this matter. My name is George Anchetta, I live at six-oh-six Bass Drive, I've had property in River Park West since nineteen-ninety-eight. Uh, a couple things I wanna address, uh, to you, the first thing is the notice that Public Works sent out, uh, is completely erroneous. They, the information they provided to the public and perhaps to you commissioners shows a vacant lot. This is the one we recently received, it's the same one we received before the last commission meeting, a vacant lot. And in there, they specifically say that this has been a public street since nineteen-fifty-nine, that's sixty-three years. And they say that this portion of Bass Drive is currently not used, utilized as a road. The truth is, and I have copies for all of you, um, here, if I may approach.
She needs a copy for public record, and then... We can definitely see him, but then I'll have to go back to her, once you give them to us, they're in public record.
Yes, sir, thank you.
I, uh, neglected to mention, um, that, uh, we're gonna try to hold public comment to three minutes. We haven't set the clock on you yet, but we're gonna try to hold it to public comment, if you can, uh, about three minutes.
As you can see, there is a residence there, it has been there for almost a year. So the fact that, uh, Public Works has, uh, sent out information showing a vacant lot, and the fact that it's not used as a road is completely incorrect, it's deceptive, and I don't know the reason for that, I'd like to get some answers from the Director of Public Works. As you can see, there is a residence there, and in order for the occupants of that residence to go in and out of their house, they have to use the public road, so it is being used as a public road for vehicles. This road is also used by pedestrians, I've seen golf carts, people walking their dogs, fishing, I've seen a family picnicking there, so it is used in other ways besides vehicles, which they are stating that isn't. So I wanna, I wanna correct that to the record, and I'd like to have an answer as to why they're sending out this information. In, uh, March of, March twenty-one... In March twenty-one of twenty-twenty-two, after the last meeting, uh, where a decision was not made, um, one of our property owners, Sharon Shaver, sent communication to the board saying the same thing, that this is outdated information and that it should be corrected, and yet here we are, almost a year later, and we're getting the same thing. Second, uh, point I would like to make, um, the first meeting was May twenty-twenty, as Commissioner Pickens said, almost two years ago. Um, and as Commissioner Pickens said, that, uh, it, basically, the board thought this was a done deal, that there was no community opposition, um, unfortunately, that is not true, I have a petition here, which now has sixty signatures on it of property owners and residents that are opposed to this. At the time of the first meeting, I think I had forty-eight signatures at that time, I sent that all to, to the board members. Um, however, apparently that wasn't enough, um, to, I guess, uh, institute a decision. To, I guess, institute a decision. So I wanted to make that also, and I do have that with me, if you would like to see it. By the time the second meeting occurred, which was in March of 2022, I had also sent documentation to the board. And I believe I sent the letter to the county attorney. Basically documenting the original covenant from 1959 of the developer. Transfers of that property into the boat club. We had community property that belonged to everybody. At that time. We did not have a homeowners association, we still do not. So the boat club, which was a nonprofit corporation, accepted the deeds to these properties. And in their bylaws, the first thing they say is that they accept, it's got the list of the properties, lot 32. Being part of the adjacent property that the applicant now owns. Was only to be managed, maintained, improved. And provide security for all the property owners, the residents and their guests, right here in their bylaws. They had, the reason that the applicant qualifies for this application is because he bought that property from the boat club. I maintain that that was an illegal sale, they had no right or authorization to sell that property. So the question everybody asked me is why did they sell the property, why did the boat club do this? Well, it was done without the membership knowing or being informed or voting on it. By the directors. Five directors, two of which are married to each other, so they vote as a block. And one of the directors is none other than the applicant himself. What a coincidence, nothing nefarious going on there. So that's how he acquired this strip of land waterfront property from the boat club to be able to apply to this procedure. Now I informed the commission on all that. So here we are again. So as the elected governing body of this county, I believe it's your obligation to do what's in the best public interest for all the citizens. Now. The applicant might tell you, well, this road is not used, well, I've got 60 signatures that disagrees of people that live there. And since it is a public road, it could be used for anybody, anybody from Interlochen can come and use that part of that road. It's the closest point to the river. We have disabled veterans, we have other disabled residents that are either in wheelchairs or have to use a scooter. And sure, we have that county property that's an island. But in order to get from the parking area to the closest point to view the river, they have to go across a bridge and a large portion of grass. In this case, on this property in question, they could drive their car right up to that, they don't even have to get out of the car if they don't want to. They could get out, put a chair right next to the car and they have this beautiful view of the river. It's the closest view, the closest point you can get with public access. So I urge you to please consider the benefit and the public interest versus the benefit and the interest of one individual. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Ancheta. Next, I'm going to, yes, Mr. Harvey.
Thank you, Mr. Ancheta. May I ask you a question, sir? On the map that you passed out, and I'll be asking Mr. Nimitz, I don't know if he's seen this map yet. What you've highlighted in the black area, is that what you're proposing is the road in front of this house with the white roof on it?
Yes, sir, if I may.
No, I, I, you're fine, I just have another question.
Yes, it is, and that is basically taken off what the, the map that the Public Works provided showing an empty lot.
Well, it sure doesn't, my point is, it sure doesn't show a lot of traffic happening there, other than whoever owns the white house, the white roof house is getting into their driveway.
Correct.
Other than that, it doesn't show that.
No, you're absolutely right.
So who owns the blue house also is affected by this vacation too, then?
That was recently purchased a few months ago and I don't know the owner.
Okay, so the lot line, and I might ask, Mr. Nimitz, may I, I'm done, thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, would you like to see the other?
No, I've got it, I've got it. So, Mr. Nimitz, is that your understanding too, is that the, the black end of the area that here is where the road is? Where our surveyor or our title cert said the road was at?
Do you have any further questions?
Yes, Commissioner?
Would you like a copy of this one?
No, sir, I saw it there earlier, the, the residence that's being referred to is 100 Bass Drive, that's the requester who's making the request for the vacates. So again, there'll be no parcel owners adversely affected by this vacation. That is the requester, that is his parcel there that is accessed by that portion of the road.
So let me ask you this, Mr. Nimitz, where the turnaround here is over on this piece right here. That's actually the road where it's supposed to be at? Right here, by the blue roof house?
Yes, that portion that's, that's the squares.
They come in off the road and then they access, then the road goes all the way to, I guess it was going to have a bridge there one day or something to connect it to, I don't know. I don't know why the road dead ended right there, probably because they quit building the canal off the river, whatever. So no one's affected by this, truly. They can still see the river, they can ride around their golf carts, they can still see the river, life's good down there.
That is correct, and again, this is a road, this is our right of way, right of way is not to be utilized for pedestrian traffic or parking or anything of that nature.
Right, okay, thank you, thank you, Mr. Chairman, for the latitude.
Not a problem, uh, next, I'm going to, Mr. Jan Drew, are you ready yet or would you like someone else to speak, okay? No, it's not an issue, sir, please come forward and state your name and address for the record.
My name is Kenneth Jan Drew, I live at 104 Ludwig, Ludwig Drive, Hudson, Florida. To answer your question, sir, about the property now, it might get utilized for several factors, there's posted signs around. And, second of all, most of the public don't know they have the right to use that property, so they're not going to pull up on selection of boat law. Because it looks like the house next to it owns it. So that answers your question about the traffic. Now, what I would like to see, and second of all, this vote, this vote. Let me explain how much power that has over us citizens. This building here is public land. Now, if the boat, boat club put a vote in on annexing this property, would it come? No, that's public land, you don't have a right. Now, the other thing is, give me a moment. I'll show you, this is the map of the plaque, book four, 31. Might be a little old.
Is he going to have, is he going to turn that in?
And let me read what it states. River Park Incorporated, a corporation existing under the laws of the state of Florida, does not, does hereby certify that it is the owner of the above prescribed lands. And dedicates to the public, the boat basin, the canal, avenues, drives, as shown on this plaque. And declares that all county taxes have been paid. Now, dedication, let's do a simple reading. What is the definition of dedication? Definition of dedication, the giving of land by a private person or entity to the government, typically for streets, parks or school sites. As part of a condition of a real estate development, which the local county or city or other public body must accept declaration before it is completed. Now, as I read, this basin, the circle you see in blue, everything in blue was given to the county. The reason why, they didn't want to maintain the roads, second of all. So I'm sure the commissioners at the time that voted on this realized that we got to get something. What'd they get? They got an opportunity for the public area to be used, which is the basin. Now, let me give you the definition of basin. Boat basin, definition means the entrance, the water, the space, the structure with the boundaries of the break wall. Everything in that circle belongs to the public, including the island. And you can look, this is documented. All right, here we go. Now. That we have that, so. Boat club boundaries are in yellow, that's all they have a right to. The reason I circled yellow around there is because the boat club somehow managed since 1959 to acquire the basin land around it. And put docks in it. Now, by the Bond Act laws, if you look into it, which you really need to have, because I'm familiar with it. There's no handicap access to any of those boat docks or any place around it. And I'm pretty sure it's a violation of the Bond Act. And you can look at it, because we're going to. And the other thing is, I have friends of mine that don't have any land. Pull up to that wall and be able to unload my friends, put them in the boat, take them out for an enjoyment. Bring them back and unload them, and if we caught some fish, maybe we can clean them and cook and barbecue them right there by the water. I'm requesting today that this committee consider the possibility of putting a park in that property that we already own, citizens, community. So please, please consider this, look into the laws before you make any decision today. And I thank you all for your time.
Any questions, Mr. Jan Drew at this point? Thank you, Mr. Jan Drew. Uh, next, I'm going to ask, uh, Henry Ancheta.
How do you do, Henry Ancheta, 152 Hicks Avenue? So. I oppose this, I've been walking that street for a bit, when I've come to visit my brother in the past. We spoke earlier, George Ancheta. I used to bring my children and I used to walk to the end of that road to see those sunsets, it's a very beautiful picturesque area. I understand, Commissioner Harvey, that you are mentioning the fact that there's no traffic really anymore on that road. That particular section, however, I would ask you to consider the fact that there is road, foot traffic. And just because it's designated a road, it doesn't mean that the public is not utilizing it. We're utilizing it in different ways that may not, may not be obvious here. And my concern is that if this property is vacated at this time. That there's possibilities of new fabrications of buildings or, um, things that will block the view and just not go with the community. I think it's a great idea to put a park for the handicap and to move forward and. I hope you all do the right thing here and go with the people, your constituents that are requesting that you do not go through with this move, thank you.
You do, you do understand that county doesn't own the property, they can't put a park on private property. I just, I mean, it's all right that you say that, but you can't do it, it's state statute, it's not our rule, it's the state's, you can't put a park on, on private property, you can't. I understand, I'm just talking about the park deal that I've heard twice now, we can't put a park there. No, sir, your time, no, sir, I'm not going to debate this with you, I'm just stating a fact, we can't put a park there. See, I'm not going to debate you guys, I was just trying to give you a fact. Sir, I'm not going to debate you, I said. You're going to have to step back up to the microphone if you want to speak.
Perhaps a park isn't in the picture, but, um, foot traffic is still there. And I, um, appeal to you to please do not, uh, vacate this property.
Yes, sir.
Provide this property, I say, thank you.
Yes, sir, thank you for coming today, we do appreciate it, believe it or not. Next, I'm going to ask Angela Wickson? I'm sorry, I botched your name, didn't I? If you give us your name and address for the record.
Angela Wickham, I've been, uh, address is 111 Ludwig, I've been out there 25 years. Okay, in the last three years, two and a half, three years, we've had a lot of residential turnarounds. Because old people die, they sell, they get, you know, and. We've also had COVID breakout, so that's a big problem there. The, um, boat club had a meeting, I was called, somebody called me like 15 minutes before the meeting to saying there was going to be a vote. A vote for what? I didn't know, nobody knew what it was about, so when I went there, there was three people that showed up, besides the people that run the boat club. And, um, they were voting to donate this property to Cartwright. The problem is, there was only three people there. One was Mr. Reddick, which was leaving town the next day and never could come back because he moved up north. Then another one was a man named Dom, which isn't even a member of the boat club at all, but yet they let him vote. And then I was the third, well, I asked the, um, president of the boat club, Jim Bragg at the time, how, how big is this land? And they said the land, this blue area, was only the size of a lawnmower, strip, that's it. So I thought, well, I'd vote for that, you know, all right, hell, that's just a strip of a lot, but it's not, so I was lied to. Three people in that meeting was more or less lied to about that, so we voted and then I went on. Well, they didn't hear any more about anything because of the COVID mess going down and everything like that. So, you know, I don't know what Mr. Cartwright's plan is with this property. I've been told a lot of things and I don't know what's true, but we don't need a business out there. One, I was told that he might put a boat rental thing out there, we don't want a business, this is a residential neighborhood. We have six children out there on this side now. We, I don't know a lot of the neighbors out there because they've changed, like, you know, this past year, they've changed like it's nothing out there. You know, but, I mean, my neighbor's right now, he's selling his house to go to Alaska, he hasn't sold it, and then another one behind me, they died, both of them died, and this other self. So we don't, you know, we changed, the, in the last two and a half years, we've changed a lot out there. And since it's changed so much, we haven't, the boat club hasn't had enough time to get ourselves together because of the sickness and the changing. That we do have to do a lot of maintenance on the benches and stuff for our club. Because I noticed the other day how they were torn up and everything, I think we need to do away with it myself, but. The thing is, is our boat club has fallen behind on getting stuff done. So we have to get that done and get our neighbors together to do that. But I don't know what the plans are with this land, that's the thing, what he wants to do, but we don't need a business. I mean, he's already renting the house out regularly, which is fine with me, he rents it out, you know, like a B R B or whatever you call those things. You know, there's nobody that's going to stay there permanently, but we don't need a, a boat rental business or anything like that in this area. That's all I got to say. Thank y'all.
So, yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Ms. Mixon? Ms. Mixon, can I ask you a question, please? You said a few years ago you voted on giving some land the size of a lawnmower, but my understanding is, is that the road you're talking about or another piece of?
Yeah.
Well, the road was dedicated a long, long time ago, why would the boat club talk about a piece of land as big as a lawnmower?
I think they were talking about the land between this right of way and the boat basin, there was a strip in there.
They said it's a strip as big as a lawnmower, it goes on the side of the water, strip as big as a lawnmower is what I was understanding.
I got it, thank you.
And that the boat club has to pay to keep it mowed, so that, but then they said if, we. we just let Cartwright have it, he would mow it and everything. But it's just a strip, they said.
To me, all they're asking for today is the road, and I didn't know about the re- the strip of land the size of a lawnmower.
Yeah.
So thank you. I'm good now.
The thing is, the, in the boat club, no one was notified about this meeting. And fifteen minutes before the meeting, they called me up, somebody did. Nobody knew because of COVID, nobody was going anywhere.
Well, thank you, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next, I'd like to, uh, call Albert Morris. If you would state your name and address for the record, please, sir.
My name's Albert Morris, and my address is five forty South Carpenter, Orange City, Florida. And, uh, if y'all will look at your, your map that, that you have right there, I own the property, at the top of that map, you see a brown looking arrow. There's two lots there that I own, plus I own a lot across the street. Uh, it's my understanding that the Putnam County Commissioners look for the good of the general public. It does not appear that the approval of this request is in the good of the general public. If this is approved, I would like to know who to apply to, to close Haze Avenue. Between my two pieces of property. One is on one side of the street, the other two lots are on the riverside of the street. Everyone would still have full access to their property, because I own property on both sides of the street. And, uh, I'd like to know who to speak to, to do that. And as you all know, if you do grant this, you're setting a precedence. Now, we've talked about this property quite a bit. And, uh, the county used that property up into the nineties. And I have a picture here where the drainage ditch was open and then it went under the ground, through that property, over into the, the canal that runs out into the river. So it's not like the county hasn't used it. The other thing is, the grader can't get back in there, he can't make that turn. It's, uh, the property's tucked back in there a little ways, so he can't make that turn. I, I really can't see how y'all can give up that property that you've used. And, uh, you may end up going back using it again, because the drainage isn't that good down there. And there again, I have a picture of where you run the pipe across the road and then out into the boat basin, if anybody would be interested in looking at that.
I'd like to see it. I'd like to see it also, uh... Steve, have the Commissioner Pickens, he'll pass it back.
This is the new home. And you can see the ditch running down through here underneath, meet there. The driveway into the lake.
Morris, you're gonna have to speak into the microphone, we're, we're recording the meeting, and so, there you go. You can show us from there or whatever, but like I said, you're gonna have to speak in there where we can record your phone.
So I'm thinking the county may wanna use that property again one day. I can't understand why they would wanna give it up. I've owned that property in River Park since the early eighties. Like I said, I got two lots on the river, one lot across the street. No reason why we just couldn't close the whole road. And, uh, and then you could give me that portion of the road if we're giving property away.
Mr. Harvey, do you give us a question?
I do, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Uh, Mr. Morris, is this drainage, are you telling me that it's going across the bulkhead? Or no? It doesn't go through the bulkhead, right?
It was an open ditch.
But it doesn't apply to, it's, it's back this side of the bulkhead, correct?
No, it's on the far side.
Right.
It was an open ditch.
Okay.
And then it ran underneath the driveway of that white house that's in your, your picture that you have.
But it, but it doesn't blow out the bulkhead.
It ran under the ground all the way in.
Yeah.
Through the access to the boat basin.
Okay. And are you saying that the grader has to back up into this road now? 'Cause it doesn't appear on my map that it do-
No, he doesn't back up.
You said he can't get down there, it's too narrow and he, and we need to keep that for that reason.
It's not, it's so narrow, it's the grader is so long.
But he, he doesn't back into that road now? So he grades the road without going down?
Yeah.
Okay. And the other question I had, the other answer I had, if you wanna vacate a road, you have to do it through our public works department. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr., would you give that?
Thank you, any other questions?
I think that's all we have for now, thank you, sir. Uh, next, I'd like to call Albert Rowley. Uh, you, uh, sir, you can't have it back, once you turn it into us, it's public record, so... Yeah, I was talking to Mr. Morris.
Uh, my name is Albert Rowley, I live at, uh, one, two, three West Palm Avenue, uh, River Park West subdivision. Uh, my, uh, my issue that I have with, uh, concerning the Bass Drive is, uh... I don't know if you know, I, I gave her a picture, it shows that we're in a flood zone, this whole area is in a flood zone, not just Bass Drive, but the whole, whole area back in there is a flood zone. And during hurricanes and stuff, most of that property down there floods out. I mean, it's a given thing, it does that. But when there's not a hurricane, even during like a regular afternoon thunderstorm in the summertime, uh, Mr. Morris is telling you where he lives, there's flooding right there. That area right in there floods out, whether the underground utilities, storm drain water or whatever is, something's bad in there. Uh, but the street that I live on also has flooding, same issue. The underground utilities or whatever you wanna call it, storm drains or whatever, was designed at that time when this, uh, uh, subdivision was put in there to drain into the St. John's River. All the storm water runoff from Highway three oh eight all the way down to the river, everything is channeled to run towards naturally, gravity flows downhill. If it's gonna flow, it's gonna flow downhill. So, uh, the storm water all runs off down there. Uh, my issue though is that with the storm water runoff, other than, let's try to see if we can correct that problem to start with before we actually abandon this property then. That somewhere under every road that there is, just about anywhere you wanna go, either rural areas or city areas, you, all your utilities are underground. And they usually, every case I've ever seen, the utilities are always underneath the road. You got sewer, you got water, you've got storm drains, uh, communication, everything runs underneath this road. Uh, I don't know what the extent, uh, the extension of Bass Drive is. Uh, if the county is liable, if they turn this property over to the, uh, anybody, if the county is gonna be liable for any underground sewage or anything that's happened is underneath the ground. It could be, uh, something that comes back on the county, that if there's any digging or whatever goes on there, somebody cuts a fiber optic cable or something underneath there, the county possibly could be liable for that. I don't know that, but I'm just, uh, saying that, uh, there is, I'm sure, some sort of underground utilities underneath that property right there. Uh, and my main co- main concern is, uh, storm water runoff. And if we can fix that or try to get that issue with that, and I believe, uh, we'll be a lot further ahead. And that's this property right here, uh, like Mr. Morris said, he showed pictures, I'm sure, I guess you've seen the pictures. Somewhere there is an underground culvert that goes across there draining this property, because right in front of Mr. Morris's, uh, property right there, that road floods the same way as it does on, on my street. And so, that's my, that was my main concern.
Thank you, sir. Any questions, Mr. Rowley? Thank you, Mr. Rowley. Uh, that's all the comment cards that I have at this time. I'm going to, uh, ask, uh, Mr. Kennedy to come forward, who is the agent for the applicant.
Good morning, Patrick Kennedy, six, seven, three, Third Avenue, Lackawea, Florida. And I am the, the applicant. And I don't, again, I, as I indicated, I didn't see it in your, uh, agenda packet, but, uh, the November packet contained a staff report, contents of the vacay packet, which does a wonderful job addressing almost all the questions that were raised by the public comments. Um, and, uh, I don't know how we can make sure this is part of the record for this proceedings. I think we can one copy, two copies, actually, or if you wanna give it to Ashley, you can include it as part of the minutes. Um, and most of what I wanted to speak about comes directly from your staff, the public works staff right now. But, uh, the reason we're here today is because Bobby Cartwright submitted an application, it was a complete application, checked all the boxes that were required by your procedures. And he submitted it for this section right of way, because it wasn't serving a public purpose. Nobody was maintaining it other than the property owners, from him and the prior, they were the ones maintaining it. So they have the burden of maintaining it, uh, it seems, uh, they appropriately mentioned to be vacated and made it part of, uh, the private lands and put in private hands and on the tax bills. You have this authority to do this between hundred thirty, three thirty-six oh nine, that's a given, that's a, it's still placed today. And to address the utility question raised by the last speaker, all the utilities have been contacted as required by your application process. Telecommunications, the water and sewer utility in that area, River Park teams, they've been contacted. And, uh, the public works has, uh, this one, all the public, the FPL, not FPL, Play Electric teams. Have all been contacted, that's all in that packet I just sent. And they all said, we don't have a use for this right of way, we're okay with it being vacant, it doesn't serve any purpose. And again, the public works looked at this, reviewed it, four roads and four drains, and said it doesn't serve a public purpose as far as it's concerned. Uh, and the history of the road, it hasn't been serving public purpose. Perhaps some of what I heard today was more of a private purpose, not a public purpose, and that's not what we're here to address. Doesn't affect any other easements, I'm not gonna get into too much. I would say that the, uh, I appreciate the, uh, bringing up what the dedication is on the class. This particular section is dedicated as a drive or an avenue, it does get, it's dedicated as a park, it's a purpose of the dedication. And, uh, and the county didn't accept it for that purpose. The county's acceptance of this roadway was for the roadway system, roadway maintenance, not for the park system and not for, uh, any other passing use. Um, I wanna kind of address quickly the Lot thirty-two, this part. It doesn't matter whether my client owns Lot thirty-two or the boat clubs will own that section of Lot thirty-two. This board does not get to decide who accesses the canal through that private property. It's a private situation, it's a private consideration. Whether or not they have a right to access the canal through that property, it's between the property owner and the residents that own it. So, you know, that's not a consideration and, and the idea that, uh...
Give me one second, Patrick, I, we're having trouble hearing you, I think.
Sorry, I'm not talking into it?
Yeah, speak into the microphone, could you turn this speaker in the back of the room up just a little bit, maybe?
It's speaking a little fast, too, I'll slow down a little bit. Um, as indicated, and I'll back up a little bit, as indicated, vacating Bass Drive right of way does not impact access. Uh, the access to that canal is dictated by the ownership of the frontage on that canal, which is in private holdings. And again, the idea that this could be made a park is, is just, it'd be inappropriate determination of my, uh, consideration. It's a, it's a flawed purpose, because, I mean, we're supressing it for turning something that was dedicated as a roadway, accepted as a roadway, and then flipping it around into a park.
We can't do that, you know, we can't, Patrick, so could you, I mean, I'm trying to give you a little-
These are the issues that have been raised, I'm trying to make sure they're addressed.
Little outside the three minutes, because you're the agent for the owners, but if you could start getting there, I'd appreciate it.
Yeah, okay. Well, so in any event, um, there is a... There's a, a, a statement that vacating the right of way would affect their ability to access the boat base, which is, and they say it's, and it's public, but that's factually incorrect. The access to the boat base is actually private, except for the park in the middle. The whole, the whole access to boat base and away from parking boats and mooring boats is a private consideration. It's governed by the dedications and the deed restrictions that were directed earlier. Again, uh, this whole idea that, uh, you're, you're taking away a public access just is inaccurate. And I think whether or not the, uh, boat club had the ability to sell this property, Mr. Cartwright, is again, not for your consideration. Does this road serve a public purpose as a roadway is what you're going to decide. Whether it serves the rights of the county and the general public as a dedicated right of way? It doesn't, it never has, the county's never seen it that way, it's never maintained it that way. And, uh, I think right along the lines with every other vacation, including the one you did this morning for us and the ones you've done almost on a monthly basis, this is, this, this checks all the same boxes. It doesn't interfere with anybody's, uh, public rights of access, drainage, utilities, or any of those issues. And the issue of who owns Lot thirty-two, who's allowed to own Lot thirty-two, that's not a consideration. Um, if they wanted to dispute that, they have their, uh, their means, their, of course. But there is a lot more I'd like to say. I think if you pay attention to what your staff report, it hits all the bits, all the boxes, they did a great job on it. And, uh, if they were allowed to present that, I think it would answer each and every one of the questions. And that, and they did present it once before, but not everybody really got a chance to do it. If there's any questions of me or the applicant, oh, and one other, quickly answer the, the business on the front, that, that's not gonna happen. It can't happen under the zoning and it can't happen under the, uh, the deed restrictions. The boat basin actually, that particular slip, what I was going to talk about, I was mentioning, has actually been restricted, no boats are allowed to moor at that location at all. Slip zero, it didn't really exist until two thousand and six, when a prior owner entered agreements with the boat club, Bulkhead Act, to create that spot. They actually with private money created that spot along that ten first street. And, uh, there was a lease agreement, I can show you that, that, that went down and how that went down. So, foot zero was created recently and it's actually existed. Prior to my client owning it, deed restrictions, they could, uh, release it from the boat. And the deed restriction given by the boat club on my client is they can't park boats there. So once again, access to the boat basin and mooring of boats cannot be affected by the vacay of this road.
If you might have any questions, the agent at this time?
Yes, sir.
Uh, Ms. Wilberton?
Uh, Patrick, thank you for, uh, your explanation on some of these issues that have been brought forward to us today. Um, I know this isn't a survey and I'm, yeah, it's okay, I'm one of the last commissioners to get involved in all of this. So, just so for clarification, does the property line go all the way to the bulkhead as far as the, um, easement, the right of way that's in question?
No.
No, it doesn't. So even if we vac- if we didn't vacate this right of way, um, the whole bulkhead thing does not, I mean, you can't come up and, and like you just said, you just can't come up.
You can access the bulkhead from that right of way.
Okay. All right, and this, uh, dock right here belongs to who? I'm sorry.
That belongs to the boat club.
Okay.
That's right, the line actually comes just inside of that dock.
Okay.
That's not a fine tuned, uh, survey of the locations approximation.
Okay, all right, thank you, Patrick, thank you for that.
If we don't have anything else, so, thank you, Patrick. If we don't have anything else, so, thank you, Patrick. Do the commissioners actually want Public Works to come up and give this presentation again? I mean, we got it in our packet. We've heard it like nine times for two years.
Mr. Chairman, I'm ready to make a motion.
Uh, could I make a comment before we do? Um, seems to me like this boils down to one thing. Do we, had a homeowner come in and purchase a piece of property and purchased the land between the property and the bulkhead from the boat club, which we have no jurisdiction over that deal whatsoever. I know that some of you had some concerns. That's not before us today. The only thing that's before us today is whether or not the county commission votes to vacate the piece of property in front of, of this, out of the applicant's residence, vacate that piece of property, which it would go to him because all ordinance says you split it between who owns the two sides. He, he purchased the boat basin side or acquired it. How he got it, I don't know, but he, he acquired the purchase or the, uh, the deed to the boat basin side of it and he owns the other side, so it would go to him. So I've already asked counsel on more than one occasion, could we declare this property as surplus and sell it? Instead of doing this, we cannot. For the counsel, that is not an option. Um, so the, it basically comes down to we vote to give the piece of property to the, to the owner that has the property on both sides and maintains it, or do we, uh, keep the property for public access in the future? Um, and I think that's the question at hand the best that I can surmise it today. So it's up to the board to decide what they want to do.
Mr. Chairman-
Chairman, hang on just a second. Commissioner Harvey. Mr. Chairman, I think you're correct. Um, and I also want to bring the attention of the commission in the letter from Ms. Sharon Shaver, that I believe everybody, um, got. Um, I actually spoke with Ms. Shaver and her husband and Mr. Archetta, uh, last Saturday. And, um, you remember, he referenced some ordinance, um, that he texted me and I texted him to our county attorney. And, and again, that does, and Rich, I'll have you answer that. This does not apply, uh, as far as being able to surplus this people property to sell it.
So that's correct. I mean, depending on how a county owns property, the statute is pretty clear on how the county, if they decide that it's no longer serves a useful public purpose, how they dispose property. So disposing a property that's owned, that's as a parcel or a lot, is not the same as vacating a road, which, uh, I think Mr. Kennedy correctly stated under three thirty-six oh nine, details what the procedure is.
I have, I have one other question. I asked, um, I put him on the spot, Clay Davis from the property appraiser. I think I asked this at the workshop. If the, the pleasure of this board is to vacate this, then the, the property would go to the owners of the property on either side, which just happens to be the applicant. Would this parcel become, would it become one parcel of property where the house is all the way to the, the canal, the inlet to this lagoon, and all the way to, back to the portion of vast drive that would continue to exist, which connects with Hayes? I think I had that correct.
Yeah, thank you, Commissioner Pickens. In nineteen fifteen, the Florida Supreme Court ruled that lots in a subdivision have been dedicated to the county, accepted that dedication. Those lots run to the center of the road. So as we sit here today, the county has what they call an easement engross to that property. The county has a right to use that property. That property is owned, is privately owned by the applicant as we sit here today. He doesn't have a full use of it because it was easement engross based on that dedication. If this board decides to vacate that portion of vast drive, or any road for that matter that's in a dedicated subdivision, then it just exposes his lot lines in the center of the road. He owns thirty-two, a ten-foot strip, which is the, the lawnmower size. That's the ten-foot strip that is on the basin side and runs north up to meet lot thirty-one. So he owns thirty-one. He owns a portion of lot thirty-two, ten-foot wide. Doesn't matter how, what the width is, if it's buildable, he owns that. That's a, a lot on the flat. It just exposes his lot lines in the center of what was the road. Can I answer your question?
It would, it would become one parcel of land?
It would become two parcels, thirty, this portion of thirty-two. And I, I can't even remember if we have it combined already, but he would have a portion, he'd have thirty-two, which then would be in the center of what now is vast drive, and thirty-one, which would be thirty-one and what is the center of vast drive. He could ask us to combine those together. Anything we require, Mr. President?
All right. Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion.
Go ahead.
I'd like to recommend that we follow the Public Works' recommendations to adopt the attached resolution authorizing the vacation of a portion of vast drive in Crescent City, Resolution Number twenty twenty-three dash zero zero two, Resolution of the Board of County Commissioners, Putnam County, Florida, to vacate a portion of vast drive in River Park subdivision in accordance with Section three three six point oh nine, Part of Statute's Closing and Abandonment of Roads, Authority of Section three three six point one two, Part of Statute's Closing and Abandonment of Roads, Termination of Easement, Conveyance of Feet.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
I'll second it.
Do we have a motion and we have a second? Under discussion.
Yes.
I'm sorry, Commissioner.
Okay.
Yes, sir. Thank you.
Okay. Um, as a real estate agent, um, I'm often in a position to explain, uh, right of ways. And so I just want to make sure that, I know most of you understand this, but I always refer to it as a layer of cake, right? So the underground, the property itself is not owned by the county. We simply have a right of way for road purposes only. And, and by vacate, by not, even if we chose not to vacate this road, you can't build a public park there. We do not own the dirt underneath the right of way. So it's like a layer of cake. You own the, the dirt is owned by whoever. You, and, and then you, as a property owner, let's say you allowed a utility company to come in, or you allowed the county to come in and put a road. You still own the, the property itself. This is just simply an easement that goes over top of that property. And so by vacating this right of way, all that does is just take away the county's ability to use it for road purposes. And I just want to make sure that everybody understands that because it seems to be, there's a lot of things being thrown around in the room, like a park suggestion. And that's just not, regardless of our decision today, we, we don't have the ability to build a park there. So, that's- I, I understand your comments, yes, sir. Okay.
Sir, I'm not going to tell you again. We're not going to debate you from here to there. If you want to talk, I promise you, I'll let you come up here to this podium and talk as long as you want to talk. But I'm not going to debate you over issues we can't change. Okay? All right. Now, this is very highly unusual. And if the board won't slap my hand, I'll let you because we're in the discussion of a motion phase.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to-
I don't know that we've ever done this before, so make it short and sweet.
I, I think the point here is the fact that we want this space not to be vacated. We want to be able to have it as public land.
We understand that completely.
Enjoy the scenery and not have signs that say, "Private property," et cetera, "Keep out," um-
We, we understand completely, yes. Now, I really apologize. Please come forward. I don't want y'all to think that I'm, I'm restricting your access, but this is just not how we do business, that you actually get the, the public to discuss during the discussion phase of a motion. But I'm going to allow it today because I don't want any of you to think that I'm trying to restrict your access here. So, yes, ma'am, if you'd give your name and address for the record, yes.
Wendy Fowler, one oh four Lugley Avenue, Crescent City. I just have a question. That if you decide to vacate the road, would the owner of that property be able to fence that off? Would he have the right to fence it off? No one would be able to walk on that land anymore?
I would assume that to be the case, but I'm no attorney.
Ma'am, and to be honest with you, he has the ability to fence off that strip that he bought from the boat club all the way around his property. He has the ability to do that now. Now.
Okay. So is there any further discussion on the motion? Oh, I'm sorry, Commissioner Adams, Zach.
I guess I have two questions, just because it was brought up during the discussion. They, they talked about, um, golf carts. Is this even a golf cart community? Are they allowed on our public roads in that community? Does anyone know that?
A golf cart community, yes.
It's a golf cart community. And then on an easement, what, can there be an easement for public access to walk in golf cart? Or is it only for roads in this case, for cars? Right, right. And what about walking pedestrian? So, so I, I apologize. Um, I am normally, I wish that you guys would take all the vast, driving the whole community into private, into back to the boat club or whatever it was before. So I'm all for normally giving land back that we don't need to maintain or that we shouldn't have taken in the past, in my opinion. And granted, I wasn't on the commission then. I didn't even live in Putnam County then. But, uh, you know, there was a lot of things taken in by prior commissions that probably never should have been, in, in this commissioner's opinion. Um, we all may have a different opinion there. Um, also to add it to the tax rule, there are benefits there. Um, I don't know. This is, this one's a, a conjunction for me. I, I do like the idea that if the golf cart thing is an access, that it is approved access and walking is approved access on our easement. It kind of leans me towards the, the public's view of utilizing that for that use, understanding that your use is, is a view, just like they just said. He could basically put a fence around that whole road part. Well, if he has enough, actually, enough space. I don't know if on the, on the lagoon side, he probably doesn't have enough space to put a fence because I think it's less than ten feet. Your fence has to be so far off the property line. But, uh, that's something for pub, again, not for me, for public, not Public Works, even for planning and zoning. All right. Thank you. That just helps me decide how I want to vote.
Well, this one is a tough decision. Um, it's not as easy as either side wishes it would be because, just man, please make it short. So like I said, this is unprecedented.
Okay. We have an island in, in there, too. There's a big circle with an island in it. If y'all give him this property, is, is any way later on, he can come and take the island, too?
Not from us, no.
Oh, no.
Mr. Chairman, I call the question.
Mr. Harv, I'd like to really have a comment first, and then we'll vote on it. Um, this is not as easy for us on either side of this. It's really not. Because while I'm an advocate, a big advocate of trying to, uh, put as much unused property as we can back in the hands of the public and try to get them to pay taxes on it instead of making it taxable property, I'm also a big advocate of someone that has owned property for fifty years and if they only walked on it twice in their lifetime, they still could. So I see both sides of this. I truly do, both sides. And this is a very difficult decision for me. And this is one of the times I'm glad I'm the chair. I can't make a motion. I can just vote on it when it's done. But this is a difficult decision. And it's, I'm sure that it's difficult for every person sitting up here weighing on this because you're having to get, you're having to take sides between two pretty much fundamental values of being a commissioner that we see up here. I think that's what Commissioner Adams Act was just discussing, is those are the two fundamental issues on almost every decision we make. Which way do you want to go? Do you want to put the hands back in the, uh, public, put the property back in the hands of the public where they'll pay taxes on it again? Or do you allow the citizens access to the piece of property, even if they don't go up there twice in their lifetime, they still could? So I get it. So this is not an easy, an easy decision. And it dang sure wasn't made before we came in here today, not by this commissioner, for sure. Everybody know that. So anyhow, we have a motion on the floor to accept the recommendation and vacate. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Uh, I guess it boils down to me. I'm going to vote, um, in favor of vacating. So it's three to two, um, and, uh, in favor of vacating. So, thank you for coming today. Uh, we're going to move on to item C, which is the vacation of the ten-foot drainage and utility easement in the Interlock and Lake Estates. Uh, this went to workshop on nine twenty-seven twenty-two. Okay. Uh, item C, vacation of the ten-foot drainage easement. It came before workshop on, um, eleven twenty-two, nine twenty-seven, and the meeting on eleven twenty-two. I need, I'm going to open the floor up first for public comment on this issue. Is there anybody here that would like to, uh, discuss for or against Resolution twenty twenty-three zero zero four, the vacation of the ten-foot drainage and utility easement in Interlock and Lake Estates, Unit sixteen, Frederic Town? Seeing none, is there any discussion by the board? I'll entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the resolution, Public Works' recommendation to adopt the resolution authorizing the vacation of the ten-foot wide drainage and utility easement at six oh one Gene Street, Interlock and Resolution Number twenty twenty-three zero zero four by title alone.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion, carries unanimously. Um, next is item C, which is public comment on agenda, agenda items. This portion of the agenda is designed to allow citizens an opportunity to bring to the attention of the board. It is not reasonable to expect the board will engage in debate or deliberation. Please limit to three minutes. Uh, public comment cards are, are located in the back of the room. Um, and, uh, please submit them to Deputy Clark, who sits on my left, your right, over here on the podium. Ash, to raise your hand after. Thank you. So for, uh, the consent agenda. So is there anybody present that would like to discuss, to, uh, comment on the consent agenda? Seeing no one, the, uh, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Mr. Wilkinson?
I have none.
Commissioner Adams Act?
I have none.
Mr. Harvey?
I have none.
And I have none.
Mr. Chairman, I move consent agenda, items seven, eight through H, as approved.
Have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I have a motion, carries unanimously.
Did he, uh, he voted?
Okay, I'm sorry. Okay, I think I, um, next, we're going to go to new business. And while we don't have anything on the agenda for new business today, I'm going to add an item for, that came up in the last day or so, and I really didn't have time to do it officially through an official addendum. Um, I wish Mr. Kennedy had have stuck around, but whatever. Um, evidently, the city of Willaca, with their attorney, Mr. Kennedy, has decided to form a Willaca Utility District. Now, what they do inside of Willaca, I don't really care. But they are trying to go several miles outside of Willaca into the unincorporated areas of Putnam County. Um, I don't think this is in the best interest of Putnam County. This commissioner thinks they've been sneaky about the way they've done it. And I, as chair, would like the commission to let staff and, um, and our council oppose this in any legal manner that we can, to, to tell them that what they do inside Willaca is their business, but doing what, but trying to impose- but trying to impose or prevent Putnam County from ever having a presence in the utility business outside of the city limits of Willaka is not, is not what I deem to be fair for the people of Putnam County. So, with that being said, Rich, would you like to add some at this point, or just answer questions, or how would you like to handle this?
I'd like to have some clear consensus from the board, if that's the direction you'd like staff and I to take, as well as, you know, as I'm thinking through some of this, there's been a request to have a meeting. It would help if a commissioner was kind of designated as a point of contact, just for staff and I to kind of communicate with, and obviously we all pay full board during meetings, but just in between meetings.
Well, I'd be happy to do it as chair, or Mr. Pickens can do it as, as the district commissioner in that area, whatever the board would, would do. One of us, I agree, needs to be, needs to head that up, be the chairman or the commissioner for the district. I prefer the chairman. The chairman is very much, sir. I appreciate that. Okay. Yes, sir. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you. I've heard about this, kind of in passing, but I haven't really dove into the, the idea that, I don't, I guess I'm, I don't know enough to be, to be intelligent about this. So, Rich, under Florida law, when someone wants to set up a utility district, do they have to go before the legislators to do that, to get approval? Do they have to go before the voters to get approval? Kind of like an MSBU, does it have to be a defined, I guess it is a defined area. I guess I just don't know enough to know what I don't know right now.
And I, I appreciate that and understand that. Honestly, I didn't know until I started looking into it either. Chapter one eighty of Florida statutes, believe it or not, really isn't very long. It's only seven pages or so, defines how a local government can establish a utility district. And no, it doesn't, it doesn't actually have to go before a referendum or voters or legislature unless there's bonding for the cost. That would have to go before the voters of that, of that district. But just to set it up, no. Now, that being said, we talked to Chair Turner about, you know, the resolution that the town passed on December thirteenth appears to have some deficiencies under the statute, and that was kind of the basis by which I think we can propose objection to. So, like I said, there's also a, a meeting that I imagine they want to have, and kind of see what their position is after that meeting, bringing it back to the board.
So they might have been, and I don't, I can't speak for their actions, but it appears they might have had maybe some good intentions to provide some service, but it might just be a little bit fast in their, in their position. They could also just stay within the town of Willaka and sell, sell water and sewer if they want to outside of that, at, you know, like anybody else could. Could they not do that, do it that way also?
That's my understanding, sir.
Okay. All right. Yeah, thank you, Mr. Chairman.
I wonder, I guess I need to understand what you're asking of us, Chairman.
I, I want to be able to, for staff and us to meet with them and tell them that if it's not in the best interest of Putnam County and the citizens of Putnam County, but in the best interest of Willaka, then we can contest that decision that they move outside of their city limits with a utility district and possibly be able to charge us twenty-five percent premium on our own water and sewer if we must ever decide to put it in anywhere down there, which is basically what they would be able to do.
I'd like to hear from the town of Willaka, which I guess I agree.
So would I, and that's part of why I'm upset.
Is there a way we could create a joint meeting with the town of Willaka to see what their plan is, to see if there's a way we can partner and potentially be part of that utility if it, if, to the benefit of the county?
If we don't file this paper by Thursday or Friday, we're missing our window, because this has been going on for a while, and I just found out about it a few days ago.
I think it was in the paper a few days ago. It was even in the newspaper a couple days ago.
I missed it in the newspaper, somebody told me.
What is the paper we need to file, I guess? It's a?
Well, there's a statutory provision that allows for filing objections within thirty days before the resolution's passed.
And by way of that objection, we could then negotiate and make it so we don't no longer object, correct?
Or they could resolve the objection. But to answer your question, whether or not we have a joint meeting would depend on the board on the panel as well.
I'm good with, with appointing Chair Turner to move forward and have some discussions with the city of Willaka. I'm not happy that they've gone outside their jurisdictional boundaries either. And if there's a window, then we need to file our objection in that window and then, you know, go forward and see what we can do.
Mr. Chairman, I don't necessarily object, but I will say I think they put the cart before the horse. And I think now our objection will bring them to the table to have the discussion of what the future, our future and their future looks like. And if there is some, some working room to work together, then I'd be willing to do that. But we, we need to get to the table, and it doesn't appear we can get to the table without filing the objection.
Part of my concern, Commissioner, has been throughout this process, we've been getting these little notifications, like we got an email that said we'd like to set up a meeting. I didn't get it. Staff got it. But they didn't give dates, they didn't do anything. And so, you know, I'm not as trusting and loving as Commissioner Harvey, if I'll just be honest with you. And I just, I believe that they're doing this on purpose to try to get through this period without having their meetings or having any deals made, and they can just start this deal. And the only way we need to force them to the table is by letting Rich go and, and filing the, the, that we're opposed to it or whatever. And then if they want to come to the table and assure us they're doing this for the best interest of all involved and not just a money-grabbing scheme by the town of Willaka, okay, we'd be at the table talking about it. So, the only way we're gonna get them there on time, and then what we do is if we can file this paper by Thursday.
Mr. Chairman, I agree. And also, Mayor Watts met with Minister Suggs, Deputy County Minister Suggs, and J.R. Grimes, well, well over a year ago. And we discussed, but, correct me if I'm wrong, his clear intentions were not made clear at that day. And I knew that Jamie was working on something. But I, I thought that it would definitely have to come back to the county, at least with some discussion, before anything was determined, because it is outside of the town of Willaka, and it's in the unincorporated part of Putnam County. So, so I, I agree a hundred percent that we need to, and I've actually called Mayor Watts, and I think that's when it responded, when, when Pastor Kennedy called you, correct?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I got a notification. I actually had a telephone conversation with Mr. Kennedy, and let him know that this discussion, I was gonna have to move forward with meeting with my individual board members. I have since received an email, a request, and a meeting between myself, Mayor Watts, as well as Mr. Kennedy. However, I refuse to accept the meeting until after I had clear direction from my board of county commissioners on what our discussion topics might be in the hold. So, yes, I've had two communications with Mr. Kennedy since this, this has came.
Well, I, I agree. We move this forward to, at least where we can start having conversations on this.
Say one more thing, Ed. I am not against another entity providing services to people outside of Willaka. Our water and sewer is finally getting close to where it's profitable break-even. If they want to take the chances on that community, and it's spread out, it's an understanding, it's probably can get built up over time. I'm for that, but I'm not for procedurally things going about the wrong way, which is why I support doing this. But I, I'm pretty confident I will support them, them being able to serve as people in the county when it's done. Because, I, I don't, I don't, right, right.
Anything you said. I just, until we understand what they're trying to do, it's basically they're doing it without even asking permission to come into my yard.
That's why I asked the question. I asked this.
Come into my yard and tear up my grass, but don't even ask permission.
Absolutely. And I, I agree with that, a hundred percent. And I also don't want it to be something that, that locks in future commissioners. That's the key. Thank you.
Okay. Y'all want that in a motion to make you feel more comfortable, or is that concise enough for you, Rich? Okay. So I think that's a unanimous five-oh from the comments. Okay. Thank you. From there, we're gonna go to item eleven, which is, excuse me, nine, which is code enforcement, case number two oh oh seven oh 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 five six, Mr. White. And here comes Mr. Moore.
Morning. Address is five eleven East Hair Street, Blacka, Florida. Violation was unsafe home. Original fine amount was thirty-one thousand, five hundred and twenty-eight dollars and fifty-one cents. Total cost of enforcement action was four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars. Property is now compliant. The owner's requesting the fine reduction. Board approves. We recommend a reduced fine to be paid within one hundred and twenty days.
Is there anybody in attendance that would like to speak for or against this? You, Mr. White, I'm sure you're gonna have to come to the microphone and give me your name and address for the record, Mr. White.
My name's John White, mine's Florida. I guess it's forty-three twenty, not the third place I've, uh, the house that we took out, it was, it was towed out, it wasn't, I had to, I was exactly them for, uh, the order, the fine, I paid it, because it was, it was awful. Forty, forty, forty-seven, twenty-three, I could pay it like that. It'd be so weird if I moved back to, to Blacka.
Thank you, Mr. White, for coming today. Commissioners have any questions with Mr. White? Thank you, Mr. White. Chair will entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept the codes case two thousand seven zero zero five six, with the fine reduction of four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars to be paid one hundred and twenty days in this case.
Have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Have a motion and dual seconds. So, Mr. Adams, seconded by Mr. Adams Act. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was having a motion carried. So, Mr. White, that fine was reduced to the staff recommendation of four thousand, eight hundred and thirty-five dollars, giving you a hundred and twenty days. Thank you. All right, we're gonna move to item B, which is codes case number twenty-fourteen oh oh five oh two, on one eighteen in your packet.
Address is one oh nine Arrowhead Drive. Property owner's name is Willie Clements. Violation was unsafe structure and care premises. Original fine amount was fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is two thousand, three hundred and forty-two dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property and is now compliant. Requesting the fine reduction, if the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Okay, thank you. Is there anyone in, in attendance today that would like to speak in favor or against this case? Are you, Mr. Clements? Yes, sir, please come forward.
Willie Clements, seven five seven two, Canada three fifteen north. Been there for fifty years, and they got me, hard, and it's, six thousand, three hundred dollars. I've already paid, now, now, five hundred. That's all the money I had, I paid. I have to pay this, going out of business, in Canada, I wouldn't be paying nothing else. Just trying to go back on, off of it. I'm a great girl, I'm a family, and I cost the county, and me, a lot of money in the home, and, and, I have to go to the county, probably, probably have to pay my bills. I don't have the money.
Mr. Clements, is this your house? Is this your house where you live?
Yes.
And you've lived here how long? I don't know that. That's why I'm asking. It says on here that this owner recently purchased this property.
They've come to help, so, the tax did, and I, I, I've always been, been, paid for it, the tax there.
But this is where you live? You live here?
On Arrowhead Drive.
About seventy-two, Canada, I think, I think.
Okay, so it's not where you actually live? Anybody else have any questions with Mr. Clements?
And you're saying?
Damn thousand.
That's what you paid for the property, sir?
I don't know, to bring the taxes up to date.
Wow, okay.
I can't even get into place. They didn't live there. It's full oxygen, and they got the hood all hung together. I couldn't even get into, from spring to night train. I don't go in on the hood, I, first time I see it, I've got the hood all got it, it's going to my bed, and it cost me the house bill. I got to be on the twenty-five hundred.
Chairman, with this.
I got the place set, and I can't get back to it.
Mr. Adams Act?
If we, if we gave you more time, would that, would that be beneficial? In the past, we have been able to give some people more time based on their situation. Or you could come back to us in a hundred and twenty days, that type of thing, but that, would that help? We're looking at reducing it probably from fourteen thousand to two thousand, three hundred, which is substantial.
Yeah, you know, under special circumstances, and up until just two or three meetings ago, that we also waived the administrative fees, especially in a case that was hardship. So, you know, my suggestion here would be to waive, on this particular case, would be to waive that thousand and twenty dollars on top of the, the hard, hard cost. And, and that would bring that, what, down to twelve hundred or thirteen hundred and twenty-two dollars or something?
Right, right.
And, and then give him six months to pay for it versus the original ninety days. And so, and if he needs more time then, come see us, or let us know. Yes, sir.
Can, I'll make it, I'll make a motion, and hopefully you can hear it. So I make a motion that we reduce this fee from fourteen thousand, six hundred and seventy-five to thirteen hundred and twenty-two, taking off the administrative monthly of ten twenty, on top of our normal process due to your personal situation, and that we give you six months to pay it. And if at that time you cannot, please return to the commission.
We have a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay. So we have a motion and a second. Are you with him? Will you be able, you understand it well enough to be able to explain it to him, what we've done, that we further waived the administrative fee off of it? So we're gonna, the motion is thirteen hundred and twenty-two dollars, and he's got six months to come up with the money. And if he can't by then, come back and see us again, and we'll give him, I believe we would give him more time. So, so I hope that helps you, Mr. Clements. I hope that helps you. So we have a motion on the floor. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? I was having a motion carried. Thank you for coming today, Mr. Clement. The next case is case number seventeen, two eighty-five, on page one twenty-two of your packet. Uh, the next case is case number seventeen, two eighty five, on page one twenty two of your packet.
He called, he called the case number.
Yeah, I called the case number, you were, I'm sorry, you were otherwise busy.
Address is two two zero Caribbean Street. Property owner's name is two two zero Caribbean Street Interlockin Land Trust. Violation was dangerous structure and care premises. Original fine amount was forty seven thousand one dollars and fifty cents. Total cost of enforcement action is two thousand seventy six dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and is requesting the fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Anybody in attendance today would like to speak for or against this case? Seeing none, and, and, Chair, entertain a motion.
Mr. Chairman, I move that we accept staff recommendation of seventeen ninety two, if paid within ninety days.
Seventeen ninety two, what, on the wrong one? Two thousand seventy six.
Two thousand seventy six.
Yep, you're exactly, I want one more page further. Mr. Chairman, I move that on case number two thousand seventeen zero zero two eighty five, that we accept staff recommendation, two thousand seventy six, if paid within ninety days.
Okay, we have a motion and a second, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, eyes have it, motion carries. Um, next on the list is case number twenty twenty five twenty three, page one twenty six of your packet.
Address is one two eight Bell Ray Drive. Property owner's name is Money Matters Club Incorporated. Violation was care premises. Original fine amount was twelve thousand five hundred and twelve dollars. Total cost of enforcement action is one thousand seven hundred ninety two dollars. Property owner's recently purchased the property, is now compliant, and requesting the fine reduction. If the board approves, we recommend a reduced fine to be paid within ninety days.
Anybody in attendance today would like to speak for this case, please come forward. State your name and address for the record, please.
My address, we have property.
Your address, your name and, and.
My address is five twenty San Antonio Road, San Antonio Ford. I wanna first of all thank the, uh, Department of Public Safety for the construction, and given on this, I'd like to do as possible, you'd like to give better instructions. I just recently purchased this property, it was a mess, I don't know what to tell you, it was like the worst property I've ever seen. I've got a bill right here in my hand for forty five hundred dollars, that I paid the trash removal company to haul away the trash. And that's, not counting all, probably another twelve hundred dollars I paid to people, just to rake up the trash and everything. I mean, that's how much trash there was, and how bad it was. Uh, that, you know, we really cleaned the house up, it looks good, but it's probably one of the worst cases I've ever seen, too, is why I was playing the trash and everything. You know, this guy's done work for me before, and I, my bills are never the same, forty five hundred dollars, because all the stuff's raining. to haul this stuff away. But that's sad. I can't see it. It's been seventy-nine-two days, but we're requesting on here. I should have put in all this amount of money in the business. Did a very rough job cleaning it up. The time was purposeful. The time was cleaned up, probably right about it, so we made more. There's really a lot of work to be done. It's just staff people and staff people.
Right, uh, did you purchase this property for investment purposes?
Yes. So, we, we don't have to lower it at all. We've set a precedence because we want people like you to come in the county and do this type of work. We do it throughout the county and, and basically bring these up to code. And that's why we're lowering it from twelve thousand, seventeen hundred and ninety-two already. Um, the prior case, it's a little bit different. The man obviously needs help. You're doing this for investment. Um, I can't see lowering it from seventeen hundred and ninety-two dollars. In this commissioner's opinion, but I'll defer to the others.
I agree a hundred percent. I mean, it was set a bad precedent. And I think we're doing pretty good. You bought it for investment. You have a twelve thousand, five hundred and twelve dollar lien on it. You cleaned it up, you put your money in it, and you get it reduced to seventeen ninety-two, which is staff recommendation. That's a pretty good deal, if you ask me.
All right, thank you for your time, though. Because I was hoping since the enormous amount of money, like you said, that she's the trash company, we probably pay another twelve hundred dollars to rake it out.
Did you know all that before you bought it?
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
Actually, it had to be a finger job, then I thought it was good. Obviously, I need to ask her today when I bought it.
Investment world sure is fun sometimes, isn't it?
I have no idea.
So the Cheryl entertain.
Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion. I also want to thank you. I know it's frustrating, but again, you're about eleven percent of what your fine was actually going to be. So I think we're in good shape. But, Mr. Chairman, I move that we take staff's recommendation to reduce the fine to seventeen ninety-two, to pay within ninety days.
Yeah, a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Aye, proposed. Eyes have it, motion carries unanimously. Thank you. Um, Mr. Reynolds is not here today, so we don't have a further court comment. He didn't contact me. Did he let you all know, is he out of town or something, or?
Yes, sir. He notified me, uh, yesterday during the, uh, uh, delegation, delegation meeting that he was not going to be present today. My apologies, I should have, should have shared that with you yesterday.
Not a problem, I just didn't know. So, uh, next, we're going to go into appointments. Uh, I'm going to start with Commissioner Adams. Do you have any appointments today, sir? Commissioner Harvey?
I have none.
Commissioner Pickens?
I have none.
Commissioner Wilkinson?
A reappointment on Better Place Plan Oversight of James Reed for District Two. And also, um, on Parks and Rec, a reappointment of Lucas Bennett.
Thank you.
And on zoning board, District Two, Linda Bazar, reappointment.
Okay, thank you. All of those are district appointments and don't, don't, uh, need a vote. So thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Uh, and I have none to add today. Um, next, we're going to move into public comment on miscellaneous items. Um, is there anybody today that would like to speak on public comment on miscellaneous items or information? Seeing none, I'll close public comment on miscellaneous items. Um, county administrator?
No, sir. Mr. Chairman, I have no comments today, thank you.
County attorney? Thank, thank you for that. Uh, commissioner comments? Uh, we'll start with Commissioner Adams.
Hello. Just happy new year, everyone. I, I, I was, several people reached out to me, um, from the December meeting. I'm feeling much better. I still do have some medical issues. Um, they'll be staying with me for the rest of my life, so that's something I deal with. And, uh, so luckily, I'm fluctuating back on the good side. I'm feeling pretty fantastic today. So thank you for all the people that sent me well wishes.
That's definitely good to hear, sir. Commissioner Harvey?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I have a few items I'd like to discuss. Um, the rural area of economic opportunity, the REO, is the pronouncing, pronunciation of it. They're looking for an appointment by this board. We don't have to do it right now, but it was Sam Russo that was on with the chamber staff, economic development. So, uh, they're looking for another appointment. That would be Mark Litten, who is actually our economic person at the Chamber of Commerce. We can put that on a future agenda, if that's what you'd like for us to do.
I'm fine with doing that.
Okay, then, um, Mr. Chairman, I move that we move Mark Litten to the, our REO in place of Sam Russo.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Eyes have it, pass unanimously. Yes, Commissioner Harvey?
Um, on the Northeast Florida Regional Council, um, they asked me to contact the chair, and the board members are looking for another commissioner to replace Commissioner Rawls, who was serving on that. So, um, if there's anybody up here that would like to take that spot at the bumping meeting in Jacksonville, and it actually is every other month, frankly, so, uh...
If you, uh, don't mind on that one, we'll wait until the next meeting and give everybody the opportunity to think. That's a pretty good commitment.
It's a big commitment, yes, sir.
So, uh, yeah, so we'll, uh, if the commissioners would think about that, we'll...
Also like to congratulate Boyd Thompson with Ride Solutions. Um, they won an award with the Regional Planning Council on the, uh, ex, the great service and, and provides Putnam County for Ride Solutions. And that happened last week in Jacksonville. Um, on another note, uh, there will be three MSBU's coming to you for proposed at the end of the month. We're working on Violet Lake, um, resurfacing, putting a paved road there, Melrose Landing, and Maine and Baden Powell. We're looking at three proposed MSBU's that will be coming. We're meeting actually tomorrow at Public Works to define everything, make sure all the ducks are in a row. I just didn't want to catch anybody off guard with that. And in my final comments, what I'd like to say is, it has been a great holiday season. If you look around Putnam County, and, you know, I get so aggravated with people who basically stir the pot and say, we're just the poorest county in the world. We're actually the most giving county, in my opinion. We, we have plenty of festivals, we have plenty of opportunity to serve. We have plenty of opportunity to help people. I know many, many people out there who open up their wallet for whatever they need and the community does. And if you look in the back of my truck right now, there's a dryer that's going to a customer, a person that needs it for, um, to be able to keep their kids in their home. So this county is just wide open for opportunities to help. I, I met a gentleman, I will not disclose his name, but he says, you know, Putnam County's a hard county to give money to. And I said, fella, I can make you broke. I can guarantee you, I can take your money and use it for the proper uses in this county. And there's a lot of people out there that are in need. There's a lot of people who are wanting to be helped, not just because the help is available, but for investment in their life. And we all look back at our life one day, and each one of us up here had someone who invested in us. And we use our time and talents and our finances to help invest in others. And I'm proud to live in what I feel is the best county in Florida, Putnam County. So thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Harvey. Commissioner Pickens?
Thank you, Chairman Turner. Um, first thing I've got is, can somebody tell me if the Drayton Island Boat Ramp is officially open?
I understood in talking to Mike, um, Nimitz, not Mike, excuse me, Mike Rodriguez, there were a few things that they needed to finish before it would be officially open, and I have not been notified, um, whether it is officially open for use or not.
It, it is open and operational, from my understanding. However, acceptance of the maintenance from DOT has not been finalized.
So people can use that boat ramp?
From my understanding, they can. Understanding that she is transporting. I'll follow up.
I'm not talking about the ferry landing, I'm talking about the boat ramp, because I called...
Oh, the boat ramp, okay, I'm sorry.
The boat ramp, because I called and asked, and Mike Rodriguez said it was not officially open. So I hated to tell citizens, go down there and hurt themselves, and then we'd have a lawsuit. So I just need to know if the damn thing's open or not.
All the work has been completed. I would have to follow up on why it would not be...
Can you, can you please do that?
Yes.
Okay. All right, the second thing I've got is I have had a number of codes enforcement calls where people want me to look into, um, care premises. Uh, people living in tents, people living in travel trailers on their property for extended period of times, operating businesses in a, in a residential, um, zoning. But they do not want to disclose their name. Okay? I, I understand that. So I want to know what my options are, is to tell them I can't do anything for them if they don't want to give me their name and address. I believe you can file a complaint on their behalf. Okay, so I just got to put my name on it? Or change ordinance that allows for anonymous complaint. So, okay. It's state law, correct? I think it's a good law, because I don't think you should be able to file anonymously. But I have done the same thing for a certain person who I knew would receive retribution. I, I filed it in my name. Okay, so it's your name, what address did they use? Did it come to my house, or did it come to your business, or did it come here? If you like. Or did it come to the county address? Okay. All right, um, second to last thing, I just want to, um, I want to thank Animal Control. Everybody that is out there, because, um, we know we're working towards getting a new animal control facility. Facility is antiquated. What they do day to day, a lot of people don't see. But I just want to commend Kathy and Donald and Administrator Suggs and Mayor Myers. Um, there's been some pack of dogs in Crescent City for the last, uh, couple of weeks. And, um, they have expended a lot of time there setting out traps. Uh, I was in town yesterday morning, seven o'clock, and Donald was in town in his vehicle, um, riding around looking to see if you could find these dogs. So I just want to thank them. Animal Control is, is a tough, uh, business. Um, they've trapped dogs, uh, in Crescent City, and people let them out. And so some people don't think Animal Control's doing anything. They really work hard. And I just want to commend, commend them for their extra efforts in Crescent City the last few weeks. And last I have is, I want to commend Commissioner Harvey as, uh, not just being a great county commissioner, but for Larry to step out and, and serve on the Northern Florida Regional Council, and then also Florida Association of Counties, and his presence in Tallahassee. Um, it means a lot, and he gets things done, and we need that. I'm not the person to do that. I served on the AAC Committee at Parks and Recs, and, and the, now, the chairman of the Ride Solutions. I didn't think I was going to be that, but I'm at now. And, uh, we have a meeting tomorrow. So those are the things that I'm involved with. But, uh, I just want to thank Larry for, for all his efforts, um, promoting Putnam County at the level that he does. Thank you.
We agree. Make your vote. Sure.
My understanding is, in that, I guess we should, I'd like to talk about this on a workshop maybe at some point, is each, I, I appreciate everything Animal Control's doing, but I think they're also overwhelmed because they're participating in cities and towns where I believe they're required to have their own animal control or have some agreement for animal control services. Every entity in the state is, I believe, including us for our, for our countywide. But, um, at some point, it's, it's, building a new shelter isn't going to stop what we're seeing as far as the animals. It's going to be filled up in a week. We, we know that already. I mean, we've seen the numbers. At, at some point, we have to, and as much as I hate to say this, we have to put the towns and the cities in our county, their feet to the fire a little bit, to have them participate on some level with animal control. Because they're not sharing the load, I guess is what I would say. So I think we need to discuss what that looks like, and I don't know how we go about doing that. But, um, it's a conversation I, I had in passing with, with one of the commissioners in Interlockin. And just, uh, you know, I didn't, I think I came across flippant to her about it, but I mean, we really don't have to do that service there. They should, they could do it themselves. So I think we need to, uh, to talk about sharing load. Maybe we do do the service, but then they, they share some burden towards us as well, for it. Or resource of some kind.
I realize you missed our last meeting, but we had decided at our last meeting that we're going to call workshops on an as-needed basis.
Okay.
We're not just going to have them to be had at another meeting. Okay, so now we have new business. So if you would like that to be added to new business to be discussed in a meeting?
Sure.
Then, uh, we, we can certainly do that. Maybe can, will it wait until the, uh, second meeting in February?
Absolutely. I mean, it's something we've never talked about, so it's...
Basically, you're asking for a discussion for, on an update for interlovable agreements between, on animal services.
Yes, sir. And there has been some confusion as far as what we have with Wallaka, from citizens in Wallaka...
Catch that one, guys?
Yes, sir, we got, we got it.
Second meeting in February under new business, we'll have a discussion and an update on interlokal agreements between us and whatever municipalities we have an animal control agreement with.
Yes, sir.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I, I agree with that because, um, we, I have been working with staff and then the Town of Wallaka, um, City of Crescent City and Town of Pomona on interlocals. Um, I can't say that the Town of Wallaka had mentioned anything about animal control, but that was definitely a topic from the Town of Pomona and the City of Crescent City. Um, from talking to, uh, staff, is the county is required, I think, by statute to provide animal control. At what level are we supposed to, you know, provide that? That has, needs to be determined. But I'm with Commissioner Adams. I think, um, that, uh, East Municipality needs to have some, some skin in this game and cooperate with this, with us on that, so...
Discuss that on the second meeting in February, and the new business, unless someone wants to do it quicker.
That'll be fine.
Uh, I'm sorry, Mr. Lo, uh, Commissioner Lo, please continue.
No, it's fine.
Okay.
So first, I'd like to say...
That whole page of notes, what you're going to say?
Yeah, don't worry about it. I get my ten minutes. Um, first, I want to say, I'm glad to see that Bard, uh, Bard and Ranchat Road is completed. I know that's a project that's been out there and got, um, sidetracked because of COVID, and it's out there, and I know the citizens in that community appreciate that. So thank you for everyone. And the bridge was, yes, absolutely. Um, yesterday, if you didn't know, it was National Law Enforcement Appreciation Day. And I would like to just publicly thank all of those who serve in law enforcement across Putnam County and the state of Florida. And I was really touched today by Mr. Gill, um, heading up the boot drive and fundraising for the family of the son who's, who, um, got burnt. And that's one of the reasons why I love living in this county, is because we have so many people, like you mentioned, Commissioner Harvey, that will step up and help those in need. And, and we have to be at the top of the list for one of the giving, most giving communities, for sure. Um, real quick, yesterday, we had the legislative delegation meeting, and I thought that went really well. It was well-attended, uh, not only by our, uh, local government, but also by many citizens and nonprofits who shared their concerns with, um, our legislative body. And I'm glad that, that we had such a great attendance. And I'm so appreciative for Senator Hudson and Representative Payne and what they're doing for Putnam County. And then lastly, I want to mention that, um, we had a broadband meeting, a, a public meeting yesterday, and I thought that went well, and just let everybody know that we are continuing to push for broadband in Putnam County. And that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you. Um, and I was going to bring up the comments about legislative in a, a session and also the broadband meeting, so thank you for bringing that. No problem. Thank you for bringing that up. And I was, uh, also going to, uh, comment the, uh, on Commissioner Harvey and the good he does for the county. I'm still going to do that one, whether they brought it up or not. Thank you very much for what you do. And it's not the, I don't want it to be offset by the fact that you do these things outside the county. You also do it around all the things you do in the county. I mean, if you're going to cook something for charity, if you're going to have any kind of a fundraising event, you're going to have to push him out of your way if you want to be involved. So there's more to it, it's not just out-of-county stuff, it's that, and with all the in-county volunteering and things you do on top of being a commissioner. So, uh, I thank you for that. And I have no thing, nothing further to add today. Uh, is there anything else to come before the Board of County Commissioners this tenth day of January ninth, or twenty twenty-three? Seeing none, this meeting is hereby adjourned.